Okay, we're back now. Board members, we're going to move on to 9.0, the approval of the consent agenda. You know, these are the items that we've discussed in our work session and we all had the okay to put these on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is?
So moved.
Motion second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, now we're going to move to the action agenda, which are things that we'll be voting on tonight. The first item of discussion here, we've already discussed all of these, I believe, in our work session, but Dr. Colleen Sane is here to talk with us about the school picture bid.
I should have moved, I should have gone when I first moved because that five-second break would have helped me. Okay. Last Monday night, I brought you the result of the picture bid process, and at that meeting, we recommended that Photo Memories be awarded the contract. A number of concerns were brought to my attention at that point regarding customer service. On Thursday, I met with Mr. Bags to review the customer service guarantees, and we agreed on several things. Number one, we agreed to address the problem of failure to hold regular work hours at his studio. We agreed that Mr. Bags would be open with staff available two half-days per week, Monday afternoon and Friday afternoon. To address the concerns about getting a return call, Mr. Bags agreed that he would ensure that all phone calls and emails are addressed and responded to within 24 hours. To measure customer satisfaction, in January or February, we will administer a customer survey that will go to principals and a random sampling of parents. The results of that survey will be used to determine whether or not we offer Mr. Bags an extension on a one-year contract that I'm recommending tonight. In addition to that, parents who do not have a successful resolution within one week of the problem, or notification of the problem, will be encouraged to email Cabarrus County Schools. That will also be used as part of the determination whether or not to extend a one-year contract. Therefore, we recommend that Photo Memories be granted a one-year contract with possible extension for year two and year three pending thorough review of customer service.
Thank you, Dr. Sane. Now, board, as you know, we've discussed this and we've got some resolution to some of the concerns that we had then. If we have any further discussion, start on Mr. Fur's side and we'll move around. If not, then we'll take a vote and move forward.
No, I'm ready to take a vote.
Okay, Ms. Furtenbaugh.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had emailed Dr. Sane saying I would like to see a bit of a memorandum of understanding-type letter between the school district and Photo Memories. I personally don't think 11 hours a week is enough. Parents, when they're calling about a problem with the pictures, are already frustrated, and they're just continuing to get frustrated by getting either a recording, a full voicemail box, from what I've heard, or not getting a call back in a long period of time. So, for example, if a parent is waiting, maybe from a Tuesday until a Friday to make a phone call, is still not getting a live person because that person's on the phone talking or returning other phone calls, then it's going to be a continual cycle of frustration. So I don't know what the solution is, but we're a large district, this is a big contract, and I think more than 11 hours is reasonable to expect for parents to be able to call. So I don't know what the solution is, but right now, I can't approve it without seeing some written agreement. And as most of the board members are aware, there have been many times in the past where we have not awarded a contract to a low bidder because of quality issues. And this is just, since the last meeting and the tape hit the Internet, we've received, at least I've received even more emails and contact about this situation, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Furtenbaugh. Ms. Blackwelder, do you have questions?
Um, Dr. Sane, I have a question. Is there a reason why we couldn't separate the picture package from the memory book? That some companies might bid on one and might bid on the other?
No, we just bid it the way it had always been. There's no reason at all. It would just take a separate process.
The couple of the phone calls that I got was that reason solely, that they did not bid on it because they could offer one, not the other.
Right. I think the advantage to that is, is that the photographer already has the pictures in-house, and what happens with some companies, and I believe Mr. Bags does this too, is that he has those pictures and then he sub-grants that particular job to someone else.
Well, that was my question, because that was the answer, and I thought, well, if he's actually outsourcing it, would we maybe not, I mean, or could we look into someone else doing it? Because to me, that, if we could get that cheaper, we would be doing a better service, you know.
What we would have to do is have a guarantee from whoever we contracted with or gave the bid to, that they would make those pictures available for that particular activity.
When does this have to be approved? When are we needed?
Well, I am concerned, no later than June, simply because we have to get into summer senior pictures and those schedules, and I would suspect that the later we wait, the harder it'll be to get that organized.
Okay, and one last question. Is there any real impact if we were to try to approve a one-year versus a three-year? I mean, I know everybody wants a longer term, but since we have had so many problems, and I'm like Ms. Furtenbaugh, I've had a lot of phone calls about the customer service issues.
Yeah, we did not, we do not have a problem with that. I think our bid recommendation, or our RFP, said that would you be, would you hold your prices steady for three years? It was not a guarantee of a three-year bid.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Mr. Kiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And your discussions, and going back to the, his commitment to the service and whatnot, was under the guise of, we're going to reevaluate that at the end of the year. I think that's what you said, I just want to clarify.
Absolutely. We would reevaluate that, say in January or February, so we would know whether we would not, whether or not we would need to put out another RFP.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with taking Dr. Sane's recommendation based on the fact that they've been put on notice of our concern of customer service. We're getting pricing, it sounds like to me, for a three-year block while being able to reevaluate the service at a one-year interval. So I'm okay with her recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Monnet.
I'm fine with it, too, in response to Ms. Blackwelder's comment about separating the two. I don't believe one photography company would release their copyrighted pictures to another one. I don't believe that would work. If it did, it would raise your price, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you, board members, for all your questions, concerns. The question that I had, and I did send this to you, Ms. Sane, if you remember, and that was, and on the same note as what Ms. Furtenbaugh was talking about, and that was, open, his office is open Monday from like 12 to 6, I believe, and then Friday from 12 to 5, and you know, there's three days in the middle there. And the question I had, how can he give 24-hour email, 24-hour phone service if there's three days in between the two days there?
We're not saying that the office would not be open the other days. What we are saying is that there are guarantee that if you go to the studio, that someone would be there every Monday and every Friday. It's not that someone would not be there other times, but part of the complaint that I heard after the last board meeting was the difficulty of finding him in his office. And so what I thought, if we could have guaranteed, open-door office hours with people there ready to serve on those two guaranteed times, that that would be helpful. If we need to ask for another day, I can do that, but I would think that it would be difficult for a photographer, unless they hired someone else, to, a school photographer, to be in the office during the daytime due to the fact that they're out in the schools taking pictures. So that would be one more consideration we could ask for.
Well, even if it was less hours on those two days and then an extra day in the middle, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, instead of 5 and 6, it could be, you're looking at, what, 11 hours, and you may add an hour, three, four-day, three, four-hour days, that type thing, to make sure we've got progressive, you know, coverage there. Because customer service, I ran a customer service business for 20 years, and I know that that there is a key ingredient that people look for, and the parents, you know, we've got to look out for the parents, and if they got customer issue problems, we got customer issue problems, and so we can resolve that. I like the one-year with the two-year option. I like that. I like the review in a year to see to it, you know, that Photo Memories held up to their agreement with us, and if that's the case, then, you know, I'm good with it based on that, but I would like to see, I don't know what, how the board feels, but I would like to see it divided up instead of two days, three days.
Okay.
If that can be done reasonably.
That's not an unreasonable request, in my opinion.
Yeah, can I add one more thing? Photo Memories, I guess most of you people know, they're, you know, they're local, they at all kinds of events. It seems like every time I go to a school event, they've got representation there. It's not uncommon to call and not get a live person. I don't know how many corporations or companies now, and you actually get a live person when you call, but, I mean, I, you know, with their promise of what they're going to do to fix the problem, if you look at probably all the pictures they take, I bet there's, I don't know, 20,000? I don't know. We've got like 28,000, 29,000 students, and I got two emails. And I'm sure if we got, you know, the percentage of complaints, I mean, you don't want any, but I think if you look at anything we do here, whether it be senior rings, anything that goes on with students, to me, the percentage of complaints is just, I don't know why, I honestly don't know why we're discussing it. Because I think they've done a, you know, I've had kids and still got them, and they've done an outstanding job, and I've never, and I've lived in this forever, I've never heard complaints since they've been doing our pictures, but that's just my feelings.
Thank you, Ms. Furt.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add on that in addition to this traditional, if you will, mostly elementary school, I know parents buy these packages and whatnot, that we have these bids on, Photo Memories is also doing athletic pictures, yearbook pictures, and the yearbook as in the event pictures, which is why they're there. They're being paid to be there for those events in a lot of cases, and all the athletic team pictures. And as a parent, I did have some problems with pictures. They were resolved, but I have to think that was in part because I got to vote on the contract, so that some of the complaints, and maybe I heard a little more because I spoke out at the last meeting and there were references made to watching that tape, and so people tend to contact a, somebody who may be in a like opinion. But anyways, this is a very voluminous association we have, and I do like to use local companies, but I'm not going to sacrifice using a local company and giving all of this additional work when there's not a reciprocal relationship to expand, and maybe it does mean having a clerical person there to at least be a voice, so.
Okay, thank you. And once again, you know, customer service is very important, and you don't really realize how important customer service is until you're the person that needs customer service, and then it's really important at that point. But anyway, without any further discussion, I'd agree with all, everything Mr. Fur said. I think I got two emails, one phone call from a disgruntled parent, and, but to my knowledge, all the issue's been taken care of, and, you know, I too like for us to use local businesses anytime we can, and I'm ready to call for a motion. Do I have a motion that we accept the picture bid? All right, Mr. Fur's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kiger with second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have 4-2 with Ms. Blackwelder and Ms. Furtenbaugh, the descending votes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 4-2. Thank you, Ms. Monroe. All right, next, we move on to 10.2, the E-Rate final bids, and we have Michael Stocks and Adam Harky with us tonight, and this also is an action agenda that we'll be expected to vote on here just in a few minutes when these fellows get finished.
All right, thank you. Dr. Probst would like to be here tonight, but her son is having some surgery in Raleigh tomorrow, and that's where she is tonight to be with him. We went back and met with Dr. Probst, and we made calls to Time Warner, to MCNC, and did a lot of research, and basically what we've come back with are the following recommendations from IT and the state officials and MCNC, is that we request monthly site-to-site utilization for our fiber optic connections to the schools, and they will monitor our monthly utilization with graphs and share that with us as we need. We will be able to form a new, file a new Form 470 in November of 2012, based on the decision whether it is necessary to upgrade from 100-megabit burstable to 1-gig connection to a straight 1-gigabit fixed connection at the beginning of any of these three upcoming E-Rate years. And if we go above what we filed, we will incur out-of-pocket costs, and we will amend the three-year Time Warner contract as needed to take care of any growth that we may need in the next three years. But we do recommend that we approve the Time Warner contract as it was presented. Any questions?
Okay, board members, it's our turn to ask questions. I'll start on Ms. Monnet's side.
I'm definitely not the knowledgeable person on this board, but I believe you said, and repeat for me, it was the state agreed, you talked.
Yes.
Can you tell me who that was?
Uh, MCNC, there have, I think has been a question about what that is, and that's an institute in Durham that's been there for, I went to UNC a long, long time ago, and I had an internship there, and...
Yeah, excuse me, Michael. We can just say MCNC is Micro Computer Network of North Carolina. That's what it stands for, and it's actually funded by the legislature.
Yeah, this is a state-funded institute, is also, which is where it pertains to this particular discussion, the hub site for basically the entire fiber network of the state of North Carolina. All LEAs who are on the NCRN Internet Connection, they all go through there. So they provide our router and everything to us.
And this is what they deem sufficient for the system?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monnet. Mr. Kiger, you have questions, concerns?
No, I thought last week that Ms. Furtenbaugh raised a legitimate question on treating everyone the same and having it all, but in the report that we got, I was satisfied that we are addressing that, and it just, on paper, it looks that way, but that's not necessarily the case.
Well, yeah, yeah. Basically, the burstable, that is what that allows for. It's a 100-meg minimum connection, 1-gig maximum, so if you're a smaller school with lesser number of devices, you may not use as much, but it can scale up in times of need at, really, actually, a less cost than we had last year for the fixed 100-meg.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay with the proposal, but as I've had learned over the last year and a half, as we move that way, sometimes good questions get asked, and it might perk something up in me as well, so I'm anticipating some good questions from the other end of the table.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Yeah, Mr. Fur, he's our tech connection guru. Okay, Ms. Blackwelder.
I have no questions, and I was good with the information that we received, and I'm ready to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Ms. Furtenbaugh, I'm sure you've got a couple of questions.
Well, I just wanted to thank them for getting the information I requested over the last week, so appreciate that. And ironically, on last Tuesday, an article came out in East School News, which I forwarded, and Mark, I don't know if you have a comment, I sent, I think I sent the link to everyone, and that was about the FCC has issued some communications to the communication vendors that said they need to basically reevaluate and the guidance that follows with the E-Rate filings and whatnot. And, Mark, I'm just wondering, does this contract give us enough flexibility should Time Warner be one of the companies who has to adjust based on their, and not just the rate they give us, but based on their total packages they offer and anything else? If they are one of the companies that has to adjust their rates, do, will we get the lower rate based on that FCC guidance?
I think the answer is yes. I mean, as I read, I read that article you forwarded around, I think they are looking at people and saying, you've got to make sure you're giving schools essentially your lowest rate, and if not, that it's not optional, that they have to do it. And I think that regulatory requirement's going to supersede the contract. In other words, if they quote this contract, but they're actually charging more than they should for some other customers, I think they would have to drop it down. While I have the mic, though, I guess I have one question. I noticed Exhibit A used to be the 100-megabyte slash 1-gigabyte burst. The contract, as I see it now, just says 1-gigabyte as the level of service, and that's consistent with what Kelly told me, which is they were basically saying, we'll give you a gigabyte everywhere at the same speed. Is that consistent, Michael, with your understanding?
Yes.
So that's important to me, because I did, at least I was getting a little confused between 100 and is 100 enough, or are we really going up to a gigabyte? And so I'd asked Kelly afterwards, is it really a gigabyte? Because I think I heard some recommendations from MCNC that we have a gigabyte capacity. And as I read the contract now, Time Warner's saying you get a gigabyte at all those locations, which made me more comfortable, at least.
That's, that's correct.
In terms of that level of service, because I'm always measuring what is a burst and what's not, at least in other contexts, I've seen some difficulty in burst availability versus continuous availability, and that seems to remove that issue the way it's written.
We made a very concerted effort to define what that meant, because I had the same questions, and they pledged in writing that that means you have the full gig as much as you need it.
Okay, the only thing I would ask, Mr. Chair, is on that Exhibit A, on the top, that 1-gigabyte reference was overlaid the title, too. So it does not say what that column is for? Can we have that adjusted to say speed or whatever the appropriate title is? Because I think that was, you know, so, Mark, before, it used to make a reference to burstable, and it doesn't, it doesn't say, it doesn't say guaranteed speed. Do you see it's on Appendix A?
I see it, yes. Yeah, it just says 1GB at the top, and you want that noted to be...
Right, if you can make that a proper, the title of that column?
Sure.
Because last week, I think it said burstable.
Okay.
And so if that, if the right, whatever the correct terminology, is it minimum? Is it maximum? Is it...
It would be maximum.
Guaranteed?
That would be maximum.
Whatever.
So we can write that.
Yeah. So if that's maximum, what's the minimum?
100.
Okay, so, Mark, I don't know that that's any benefit to change it, because it's not a reality of 1 gig. It's not like they gave us something extra. They just adapted the chart to make me happy, I think, and that's not the way to do a contract.
Just fix it, Michael.
Okay.
So we can have that column, and maybe if it's really 1 to, 100 to 1 gig, just change it back to what it was.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, unless Mr. Fur has something earth-shattering he wants to tell us, we're ready to call for a motion.
I've got a list.
Okay.
Just gonna move, Sue, would you?
Okay, yeah, he likes that terminology there. Okay, board members, do I have a motion that we approve the E-Rate final bids for connectivity in cell phones that Mr. Stocks has presented to us this evening? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 6-0. Ms. Monroe?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. All right, I'd like to ask Mr. Wickie back to the podium, where he's going to talk with us about the Educon proposal for energy management consulting services.
You should have before you the contract for Educon with a series of items that have been redlined by Mark, the attorney, per your observations and comments from the last meeting. So if you will scroll down, you'll see that talks about an energy accounting system under 1.4 responsibilities of Educon, and we've struck to be purchased by the board. Actually, there was, I did have a call from Jim Christie that clarified that we will continue to use SchoolDude as the process by which we keep track of our information. His software, I'm sorry, Educon software is capable of taking that information and putting it into their system and generating the data that their engineers need to look at. So there's no problem, we don't have to buy anything new, we can continue with what we have. Under 1.5, 1.5, one was struck because obviously we have a person in place, and that would be Cliff, under obligations of the board, again, the salary and benefits already resolved on that position. And under 2.5, again, the whole issue of accounting software is moot, so that's been struck. And I think going down, there was just a question all the way at the end about a signature indicating that it's Cabarrus County Board of Education on the very last page. So those changes have been reviewed by both parties, I mean, excuse me, reviewed by Educon and accepted, and they're willing to go forward with the contract if that is the desire of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Wickie. Mr. Honoreke, everything good on the legal side of this? The contract's good? All right, board members, is everybody happy with the changes that we've asked to be implemented? Everybody good? Anybody got any questions? Ms. Furtenbaugh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Sometimes there just happens to be an agenda where there's a lot of questions. Several years ago, when we, as a board, agreed to hire an energy manager, it was basically presented to us as we could do this or we could do that. We could hire a consulting firm, or we could hire an energy manager. We hired the energy manager to be in-house. We have many projects underway with QSCB money and other funds that are becoming, or bringing us energy savings. We don't have the ability, really with all of these projects in flight, to get a good baseline, and also with having a very mild winter. Our bills are not as high as they would, so there would be an appearance that this company is saving us money when in fact we would have saved it without committing $465,000 over three years. I would prefer that, and you all can decide next year when I'm not here, I would prefer that we delay this, we do not enter into a contract at this time, that if there is additional training need, needed for our energy manager, perhaps we could even send a couple people. I'm sure there are many energy management for public entity-type conferences or whatever that we spend a little bit of money to gain further knowledge, maybe even to have some training as a part of available training for teachers. You know, I think you, what Jennifer does with the, and Michael, you can listen up for this, what Jennifer does with professional development, do something related to, especially with our technology and energy efficiency, just to give teachers pointers. I think there are a lot of ways that maybe have not yet been explored that we can do for a smaller amount of money and not commit. When I look at $465,000, we already have so many things in flight, what will the report be back? Yes, next year. If we, we could spend $10,000 on some conferences and materials and other things we can do with our current energy manager and have perhaps nearly the same effect in one year because of the new windows at schools and new HVAC units and chillers and all those things that are happening. I don't think we need to spend this money or commit it right now, so I will not be supporting it.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaugh. Do we have any other comments from the board?
I want my comment.
Okay, Ms. Blackwelder. Ms. Monnet.
I tend to agree with Cindy on some of the points she made at the beginning. We have so many, I don't see how you can get the baseline she's talking about with all of the things that we're doing in the different schools, and the fact that we have had an unusually warm season, so it's going to be a skewed number, and this is a pretty big amount of money to be spending in order to get savings that may not be accurate at all. I have a little problem with that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Monnet. Ms. Blackwelder.
Well, we are going to be all over the place tonight. Blake and I both sit on the construction committee, and there again, we both can relate a little bit to this topic because we deal with it in our field of expertise. I, myself, just became energy certified. I don't even know if I told you all that. I spent two full days, and woohoo, it was right, two painful days. I can't comprehend what it takes for one person to go out and treat, to teach or treat our schools in one year's time. We've got almost 52 structures. After I left that second day, it's going to be hard for me to train my people, and I'm a small business. It's a lot of information, and even though I understand that that was our point of contention, was where do you, how do you really come up with that baseline? I don't know that that's really important. We're doing things, we're always going to be doing things. We had a mild winter, we may have a horrible summer, we may have a horrible winter this coming, this coming year, but there's no way that Cliff is going to be able to, number one, teach all of our people, make sure that they're doing the job that they should be. They're going to get a different training and a different perspective from this consultant group, and that is the one good thing that a consultant group can do, is to work with our staff and our personnel. He's responsible for the software, he's responsible for all the data and how we keep up with that. That is a lot to do for one person, and I just went through it myself. I can't even comprehend it. So my thought is, it is money, but it's for three years. That's across three-year span, it's not just one, and when we're talking about why we do three years, it's because you have to have that amount of time to actually get a baseline or where you're at, and we don't have a choice for that. It's going to take us several years to figure out what those windows have done at Central Cabarrus or any of the other measures that we've taken since I've been on the board and talk, and been talking about these, and since 2004, we're still not sure where we're at. But my thought is, I know it's an amount of money that's very significant...
that's very significant, but to me, it is well worth spent, because it's teaching. We have almost 4,000 employees here in this county. I have 21 that I have to teach, and I haven't gotten around to them yet, and I've been certified now for almost seven or eight months. I can't imagine the undertaking of that job, and a consultant group, that's all they're geared on. Cliff is spread out, not only is he going to have to teach all those people, he's going to have to continue to do his daily job. That's a lot, a lot of pressure on him to try to maintain. So, I, for one, was back and forth, I could see it both ways, but I actually do support it, and I appreciate all your time and effort in it, Lynn.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Before I speak, does anyone else have any comments?
Oh, yeah, you skipped me, but that's okay. I don't mind. I've been a little back and forth, too. I think the first time I heard the proposal, I wasn't too keen on it. I think the more we dug into it, and the more we met, I think the most, the biggest thing that made an impression on me is exactly what Ms. Blackwelder just, would just mention. Cliff's just swimming against the tide. I mean, he has really got a massive amount of work to do in front of him. I'm a firm believer that you can ask somebody to do something and expect and demand that they do it very, very well, but you have to give them the tools to succeed. And in this particular case, I'm just not sure that he's got the tools to go forward. He's got the right attitude, he's got the information, I think he's got the background. I wasn't here when he was hired, but in speaking, talking to him. But this, this program, again, and I literally was lukewarm at first, and I've warmed up to it, that I think this will be the tools that he'll need. And again, in some delicate way, that Mark has assured us, that we're not paying for savings, that we really are kind of getting our savings. Is that, I mean, we're not directly, I guess I'm still stumbling on that particular piece of it, of where the savings are going to come from versus, I mean, our fee is a flat fee.
Yours is a flat fee. They've indicated they anticipate savings, and they will track and report savings.
And based on their...
They appear confident that their saving, that your savings will exceed it, but you don't have that guarantee.
That's right, okay.
And you've got a legal commitment to pay their fee, regardless of whether they save you or not. Although, if they perform unsatisfactorily, you also have some termination rights under the contract, so...
Okay. Well, and I guess that's where, knowing that other systems have realized the savings that has been at least in the forefront when they got started, that gives me the comfort level, that I think we're doing the right thing by setting Cliff up to succeed, instead of asking him to continue to swim against the tide.
Thank you, Mr. Cigar. I agree with what everybody has had to say tonight. The only thing that I wanted to say is, I don't see how 17 other school districts could be wrong, and Cabarrus County schools be right, you know? And that's just real blunt, but that's the way it is. And I have been a strong supporter of this for several years now. We've got the foundation set, we've got Mr. Moore in place. He's made remarkable strides, but like Mr. Cigar said, he's been swimming against the tide. And as Ms. Furtinball has stated in her comments, that it's a lot of money, sure, it is a lot of money. But I really believe, just based on what I have seen, all of us have seen, on the reports that's been provided to us from Educon, that we're letting a nickel hold up a dollar, because we could have done, been saving money already, but we've been kicking this thing around for months and months and months, actually, for probably two years, ever since Mr. Moore was hired. And we could have done, saved probably more than the total fee in these last two years, had the board went with it at that time. But as far as I'm concerned, I fully support it. I think that we would be making a bad mistake by not moving forward, because anytime you can save money, 17 other school districts are doing it, some of them are even way beyond. Like I mentioned to you in our work session last week, the Rowan County Schools, they, their contract was 2001, they've been out of it for three years now. 2001 was their baseline, and here it is, 10 years later, and they're still saving 6%, 7% monthly on their baseline. So, I just can't see logically why we wouldn't approve something that's going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars annually, and millions over the next 10 years. It's a mindset, it's going to take every employee, starting here at the education center, when lights are on, turn them off. And there's going to have to be board policy to supplement that, to back it up. So, whenever you, you know, you're not only burning up energy, but you're also violating board policy. And so, the way I see it, you know, is it's pretty much a go for me, and do we have any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, I'm not against saving money. And Blake, to your point, my suggestion is, let's give Cliff the tools he needs, let's get him to conferences, let's help him to gain knowledge. I don't believe we need to spend the additional money when we have so many things in flight right now. This company's going to take credit for them, and that's my opposition to doing this magnitude of a contract. I believe Mr. Fur had a comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Furtinball. Mr. Fur?
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, I think someone, I think we talked about this two years ago, and we decided to go with hiring the person because of our financial situation at that time. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Clutz, are we in a better financial situation today than we were two years ago? Okay, then, what has changed? I mean, I understand, I mean, that's cost savings, I totally agree. And, but if we wasn't in financial shape two years ago to do it then, why are we going to do it today?
I think the answer lies in what they can bring to the table. The biggest problem that Cliff has, if he were here, he'd say it, with the cameras on or not, he's one person trying to catch and guide and teach and mold 4,000 people. Take your family, how much agreement do you have on any one subject? We have 4,000 people going, I don't know, I was using this room, I was going to come back in a little while, it's been a couple hours, but, you know, I'm back. That's two hours we might have saved in electricity, if you just hit the light switches and the way out. You can't, you can't, as one person, you can't be around every school every day. He's, believe me, Cliff has tried, it's not possible to do. These folks bring a training program, they bring technology, they bring people to the site. It's more than he can, Cliff can get from a training program. I'm not knocking training, I fully support it. I just don't think that it's a, if we were at a point where we had built all green schools, and we were simply saying, walk in and enjoy the schools and use them as they were designed, this would be a completely different discussion, but we're not there. We have a lot of schools that are energy efficient, regardless of what we do with QSCB. I, you know, and we said we would take credit for this year's work. I agree that there is the issue about, well, you know, we're still installing some systems. But all that said, we know what the baseline has been for the operation of those schools without, without the equipment being in place. We know, we can, we can take an estimate on what we can think we might save by the implementation of that equipment, and still take a shot at putting a baseline on those schools. But that's not what I'm, you know, if you ask me what I'm after with this, I'm after the idea that we're going to train 4,000 people, and then in addition, we're going to train 29,000-plus kids on why it's important to shut those lights off, why it's important to take that message home to your parents. And while it's important, you got to get me off my soapbox, I'm sorry, but, but it is, it is a soapbox that I think needs to be pushed occasionally. It's how you teach people to live better and to help the environment for all of us. And it has to start here, because that's, every day they come to school, every day they're affected by their environment.
Yeah. Mr. Wickie, how long have we had an energy manager?
About two years.
And how many administrative guidelines or policy changes have we had in the nature of energy savings in that time?
I'm thinking a couple. You know, we're working on policies right now that...
Yeah, not, yeah, not, yeah, but when you're talking about training people, in two years, we haven't had any policy or administrative guidelines presented to the board that talk about expected savings and responsibility, personal responsibility? That concerns me. And now, we want to spend more money?
Well, we have summer shutdown procedures, we have holiday shutdown procedures, those are in effect and in place. And those, those are definite guidelines about what you should be doing or shouldn't be doing.
Right, but we're talking, now we're talking about, you're talking about leaving the room for two hours. There's, to me, there's so many other things that we have the ability to do, very simple, could be done in the next two weeks, as far as guidance and whatnot. And, like I said, I just can't, I understand, I have, have an environmental engineer for a daughter, and trust me, we recycle more than, and turn off lights more than we've ever done in our lives, and it has affected my home utility bill. But, I don't think we need to pay $155,000 a year to have those basic concepts.
I think Dr. Shepherd has a couple of comments he wants to address.
I think my experiences with these types of companies go back to my former district before here. And I felt like that, at that point, much like some of you were talking tonight, why do we need to spend this money? I was disappointed with some of the results I saw, but while we were performing with a different company, I was hearing of Nelson Jessup's company, and what they were doing in other districts. Couple years ago, we talked to several different companies, and again, Nelson impressed me and his company. He's local, every word we're saying tonight, he'll be on the internet looking at it. And his, his personal commitment to, you know, I can help your district save money, former superintendent to superintendent, neighbor to neighbor, is not in a contract, and it's not in an administrative guideline, but it certainly is something that he says, you know, very, I've made this happen in a lot of other districts, and I can make it happen. And I believe it. I know their contract doesn't guarantee us savings. I also believe that a lot of the things we've already done, and things that Cliff's done in the past, we're going to continue to work for us and demonstrate savings. But I believe these folks have the experience that we don't have, and I think they have trade secrets that they're not going to share for free. And, you know, I've had conversations with community members about what we can get for free from, from other agencies. I believe we can incorporate all that. The bottom line is, I believe we're going to save significant hours of, I don't know, what is the term, Lynn, is it megawatt hours, or however they, kilowatt hours you measure it? We've seen it happen in other districts. I would encourage you to give it a chance here tonight. I don't think you'll be disappointed.
Okay, I agree with the superintendent, as you all know. I mean, I, anyway, I'm not going to say anymore. It's a board decision, it's not my decision. And so, if there's no further discussion at this, Ms. Blackwelder, go ahead.
Just to Cindy's point, because it is frustrating that we haven't had any real good policies or procedures, but that's part of their obligation, is to actually help us write some of those policy procedures. That's just another point of how much Cliff has to actually implement and to do every day. He's going to be in the schools, teaching them, he's going to be doing what he needs to do, he's the data manager, he's the reporter, and he's also the policy writer for it. And that's just impossible for one person to undertake. And they are familiar with doing all this. These policies and procedures and guidelines that we do not have in place, they're familiar with them, and I just think that's a huge benefit to us, to get that expertise and to bring it here to us. And I definitely think it's worth trying.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. And that's another thing, too, and I'll get off my soapbox on this, and that is, you know, if you don't know how to do something, and you have an opportunity to learn how to do something, then, you know, you should. And this is where we're going to be, you know, we're not talking about a year, or two, or three, we're talking about ongoing lifestyle changes in the schools. And, you know, after we get into this, and as Ms. Blackwelder so well noted, that if we knew what to do already, then we wouldn't need a consultant, we would already be doing it. But since we don't know, and as Dr. Shepherd said, the trade secrets, you know, if they was to tell us that, then they would be out of business. But anyway, the bottom line is, as far as I'm concerned, 17 other school districts in North Carolina can't be wrong. So, with that being said, if there's no further discussion at all, I'd like to call for a motion that the Educon proposal for energy management consulting services contract be approved, as it is presented with all the changes that we've kicked around through our attorney. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second. All right. All those in favor for the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. We had 5-1, is that correct?
Yes.
You voted yes. Yes, 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 yes. 5-1. Ms. Furtinball, just sending. Thank you, Ms. Monroe, for making that note there. Thank you, board members, for your support. I feel like this time next year, Ms. Furtinball, she won't be with us, but you read the paper, you read the paper, and you'll be reading about all them savings that Cabarrus County Schools is going to be getting from the energy plan. All right. With that all being said, ladies and gentlemen, it's time now for us to convene into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, characters, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or to investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. Do I have a motion? We convene in closed session.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting tonight. Wanted to say good night to everyone. Thank you for tuning in, thank you for being here, and we'll see you back in June. Good night.